City building official.
Item five, NRSY Foundation Report.
Good afternoon, everyone. And, uh... The good news is, in October, we actually carried twelve hundred and eighty-nine passengers. It's a six percent decrease over last year, and the majority of that loss was due to, we had to cut the Hunka Ghost trains by seventy-five percent capacity. Uh, what we did do to make up the difference was to add trains, and that was pretty successful. And, uh, year-to-date, our ride trip was off by thirty-six percent for forty-three hundred passengers. And so the carriage money of the railroad, or the city has invested in the railroad. It's really helping us out tremendously. And, uh, on social media, we continue to expand aggressively, and we have a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen people who like our page, and, uh, we are posting and doing homegrown videos. And, uh, we actually had the opportunity, we were featured, the railroad was featured on Ghost Adventures, which is the number-one television program on the travel channel. And, uh, that also brought a lot of people to the website, so now we have lots of ghost hunters looking at us. The real big news is, on October seventeenth, we fired up locomotive eighty-one. And, uh, we had a celebration for that, and as part of that, we also fired up forty and ninety-three. And that is the first time we've had three steam locomotives in operation for about sixty-five years. And one of the reasons we fired up locomotive ninety-three was to blow out her cylinders, and, uh, we did that, and that was really kind of special to watch. It looked like a medium-sized bomb going at us, blew out the rust and the dirt and everything after sixty-five years. So, God willing, the Creek Dump Rights, eighty-one is scheduled to join the fleet next May. So, uh, locomotive forty is currently out of service, and she will be for about two years. So, that's all I have, unless someone has some questions. All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to reports with the city council. Councilman Farnes, this is our meeting. Okay, Councilman Carson?
No report.
I don't have any either, to council.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that was easy. Uh, for my report, I wanted to let the council know that we did get, um, our letter came out. We got power saying that they were going to be donating, uh, public, the energy for public lighting this place for Christmas, for the month of December, if we do, which is nice. We got that from Shelly Watts. Um, I did listen to the governor's press conference from East State earlier this week. Um, as Councilman Alworth noted, uh, he has kind of given the state two weeks to get the numbers under control or face, um, some aggressive measures. He declined to know what those were, or what they would be. Um, and he did ask local municipalities to step up enforcement, um, working with public health officer. He asked us to send a letter out to, at least one business will be using a form letter that council has approved, with the addition of any, um, further stipulations that we can do in that, from the state after that happened. So, I guess we'll see with the next four days. So, I'll answer your question there. And we'll move on to item seven, the Maryland District City Council meeting for a public hearing at five-thirty PM on the following topics. Item one, council members, city clerk, police, city engineer, Alberg. Public hearing discussion only, prioritizing and final selection of CDBG projects for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two program year application.
So, we, uh, we received notification from GOW that one of our four projects was eligible, Mass Murray Street project. Um, the Parker Street project, with latest census data, they're saying that's not in an LMI area. If it doesn't, we couldn't do it, but we would have to do that through income survey. They recommended using a lot of water for that, but it's obviously too late this year to try and accomplish all that before the application could be done again. Um, the light reduction project, um, was, was not deemed eligible, but I was told that the county could receive funds for that. We're trying to work with them to see if any of our, um, potential projects would, um, work for them, with their money. And then the last one was broadband, and, um, and I think there would be future money available for those types of projects.
Sorry, Murray Street? Yeah, Murray Street's our option, I guess. I don't know if I got a whole lot to say, if you got any questions. Thanks, PJ. This is a public hearing, so if there's anything, uh, public as well would like to add in that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the Murray Street project. Let me remind you that economically, Central City is in a blighted area. We've been ignored for years. That if you look at economics, the, uh, income, it's far less than up from Murray Street. So, I'm getting tired of them saying that they don't qualify because of this and that. You better look long and hard, and you better start looking at what you're doing to that area down there. You gotta pay attention. I got property down there, but I can't do anything with it because of your building inspector and selective enforcement, and it's going to come back to bite all of you. That needs to end. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other public comments or comments from the council? Here we go, we'll move on to, we'll close the public hearing, and move on to item eight, discussion possible action, items pertaining to the public hearing. Council members, city clerk, police, city engineer, Alberg. Discussion for possible action, prioritizing and final selection of CDBG projects for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two program year application submission. I will entertain a motion on this item.
I approve that we prioritize Murray Street project.
All right, second.
All second.
Any further discussion from the council? Um, just to note, I don't think Murray Street qualifies under LMI anymore either, but they let us keep grandfathering that in, is that correct? Okay. Um, if there's no other discussion from the council, uh, we'll call for the vote. I'll, please.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, you did direct to the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, prior to, uh, if we received the grant for the CDBG, prior to doing that, I've discussed it with the engineer. Uh, we should go up and down the street and build people over, uh, their property. And if they want to have a new sidewalk, putting it under their house and whatnot, there's two proposals, or that, a new driveway or whatever. Give them the opportunity to improve their property right along the town that we do. And a way of possibly doing that is something the city should consider in order to accomplish its loyalty, people to do a special improvement, yes. And have that being paid over a period of five years on their taxes. And that will improve Murray Street even that much more if they have a good curfew, sidewalk, hall, or entrance, where they can put their new facilities underground.
Okay. I, I apologize for missing your note there, um, but I think that's a good point. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item nine, items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council is recommended by the Municipal Utility Board. Item one, board members, city clerk, police, discussion for possible action. Approved the removal of past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of eight-hundred-ninety-five dollars and seventy-two cents from three-ten South, uh, Silon Avenue at the request of the property owners, Lauren and Billy Reinhold.
So, the...
Utility Board, okay. Utility Board recommended approval on this item? Okay. Are there any questions regarding this item? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, I vote.
They're in so order, voting five, quarter one. Uh, we'll move on to item ten, items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. The consent agenda, uh, we have minutes from October eighth, and bills from the twentieth and the twenty-ninth of last month. I will entertain a motion to approve the amendment, though.
I've got corrections on October eight.
Okay.
I'll just, uh, read them off, and I'll pass them on to Jennifer. On page two, in the fire chase report, you have four EMS trains, not PMS trains. Then, uh, it's on page three, Sheriff, Sheriff Inrood stated there would be something to talk about, of N-DOT, not the DLT. Then down at the bottom, the mine we received from General Manager Caltman. I think that's probably Eldridge. And spelling issue with Councilman Spear. It's sort of crazy, Councilman Spear says even con, but it should be can. And then at the top of this, page four, I might need help on that one there. It's, uh, I think a twenty-five years extends way more than our lives, and definitely a lot of the future. I think it's counsel, not compliment. So, I'll pass it on to... And then on page five, down under new business, Mary Kerner gave a presentation. Just need to clarify, I missed some words. Mary Kerner stated drug-free, some got pencils. So, we, and that one there, and the last one was in the center of the page with Councilman Spear talking about the vehicle. I think he should have some kind of vehicle so he can respond directly to emergencies, to the fire sitting in his house at two in the morning. I think he means directly from his house to go to a fire at two in the morning. Another nap, the minute's looks really good, I'll just pass them on.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the minutes or bills?
Oh, the bills, I have one question, change in vendors for the year-long supplies. Where they buy all the John Carlos stuff, they change vendors, and she straightened out and out on that, went from Cisco to Nicholas.
Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to cover those corrections.
I approve with the corrections stated.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're in so order. Uh, with that, we'll move on to be new business, and I will confirm the Gallow to Mayor Proten.
Okay, item B one, Councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action. Determination that sale of city's interest in all real property to SNS shortline leasing LLC pursuant to the proposed settlement, sale and mutual release of all claims agreement by, um, between Nevada Northern Railroad Foundation Incorporated, Nevada Nonprofit Corporation formerly known as Whitekind Historical Railroad Foundation Incorporated, Nevada Nonprofit Corporation, the city of Ely, Nevada, and Nevada Municipal Corporation, and SNS shortline leasing LLC, a Utah limited liability company, would qualify for exception to all appraisal sale and auction requirements in NRS two-six-eight dot zero-five-nine dash two-six-eight dash dot zero-six-two inclusive because of the sale of the real property is to a public unity as utility, sorry, as defined in NRS seven-zero-four dot zero-two-zero to be used for a public purpose. So, um, I believe we've all received, uh, this document, this forty-page document, uh, stating the settlement, the settlement agreement. Um, Chris Stanko is here, he's the, uh, attorney, attorney for this lawsuit for the city and the railroad foundation, so, um, if there are questions perhaps, or did you want to give an announcement?
I did, please, Mayor, I'm down. Thanks, everyone, Chris Stanko from the law firm, Motlin Cox in Boyd Arena. Uh, thanks for having me, Mayor, Mayor Proten, and council members. As you know, I've been conducting the litigation with my colleague, Paul Anderson. We've then been in settlement, uh, discussions with SNS's counsel, my colleague, Proctor Hug, who is a real estate specialist amongst other law, uh, has helped me with these agreements. There's five agenda items tonight. His first one, uh, we can take each in turn, has to do with the exception for sale. The main, it's, the main juxtap of the deal is a three-point-one million dollar sale of the Northern Line, defined as milepost zero to milepost one-twenty-seven point zero. Uh, and we'll give you more detail on that, but there is no bitter appraisal based on this exception. This exception is the same in these statutes throughout both the bid and appraisal statutes. The, you know, the analysis is as follows. Um, SNS seven-oh-four-point-oh-two-oh, which defines a public utility is cross-referenced in the, uh, relevant statutes in section two-sixty-eight. Chapter two-sixty-eight of the Nevada statute says, "Any person who owns, operates, manages, or controls any railroad or part of a railroad is a common carrier in this state, or cars or other equipment used thereon, or bridges, terminals, or sidewalks, or any docks, or wars, or storage elevators used in connection therewith, whether or not they are owned by the road." And it defines public utility in other contexts as well. Um, I think it's very clear that SNS has been storing cars, moving cars on the railroad as, as part of the agreement that's being litigated in this case. I think it's very clear and obvious they qualify as a public utility. Then the question in terms of public purpose, uh, in the last fifteen years since the parties acquired the Northern Line through three conveyance documents, one grant bargain sale deed from the city of Los Angeles, one quitclaim deed from the city of Los Angeles, and one interim conveyance from a federal statute, uh, that was just, that part was just to the city. Unfortunately, there has been no economic development of the railroad. It's still stagnant, still litigating. Um, and it's our belief in working very hard, uh, with counsel from SNS to try to craft the deal, and we'll get into what we believe about the deal in the third agenda item here, but that this sets the table well for economic development, and that the ultimate goal of commercial development of this Northern Line, hopefully coming down into this community in Leipont County and the city of Ely. One of the big sort of elephants in the room about commercial development, obviously, the railroad was constructed originally in the early nineteen hundreds to get to the mine, Robinson Mine, right? Uh, I received this letter dated November eleventh, twenty-twenty. Dear Chris, Robinson Mine supports the commercial development of the Nevada Northern Railway and hopes that all lawsuits and related matters can be settled. In the future, we would like to work with all relevant parties to develop commerce on the Nevada Northern Railway, which will benefit the citizens of Ely and Leipont County. Sincerely, Amanda Hill, General Manager. So with that, that's good news, and we believe that, uh, in public purpose is defined broadly. It's utility, there's, it's not a lot as far as case law goes in this chapter, but it's very analogous to the eminent domain chapters. Um, and we think that the sale clearly qualifies. And so if there's any questions with respect to this narrow issue, with respect to the exception from these provisions of chapter two-sixty-eight, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, hearing no questions, then, do we have a motion?
I approve too, approve, yes.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
And if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item two, Councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action. Determination that in the event any property conveyed by the city to SNS shortline leasing LLC pursuant to the proposed settlement, sale and mutual release of all claims agreement by and between Nevada Northern Railway Foundation Incorporated and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation formerly known as Whitekind Historical Railroad Foundation Incorporated and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation. Uh, the city of Ely, Nevada, and Nevada Municipal Corporation, and SNS shortline leasing LLC, a Utah limited liability company, is determined to be personal property, such as personal property is no longer required for public use. It is in the best interest of the city to dispose of such personal property, and therefore such disposal satisfies NRS three-three-two dot one-eight-five-one. You want to pick that one?
Yeah. The, the title of the agreement is, is, attracts to the agenda items, that's why it's so long, obviously, it's the parties to the lawsuit. So this, this agenda item is kind of, we'll think about it as a protective provision. We have in our, in our document here, the sale, settlement, mutual release agreement, um, a recognition by all parties that the property is real property, the railroad is affixed to the real property, the ties, ballast, and everything. And there's, uh, we think that's clear under the law, and it's actually stated explicitly in the agreement. But in the event somehow there could be a determination that it was somehow personal property, and we did some things within the agreement to protect the city and the foundation in that event as well, we didn't make any rupture warranties about it. We'll get into that more in the, um, in the third agenda item. But there needs to be a determination that if that event happens, that it doesn't have any public use. That analysis is even more, is, is very clear. Obviously, it doesn't have, if you detach it from the real property, it has no public use whatsoever. Uh, additionally, even as it's attached, it's a fixture to the real property, it's going to have to be rehab significantly, supplanted, um, in some, a lot of cases, totally replaced and worked on to be able to run that commercial traffic on the line. And so this is a sort of protective agenda item, just so you can say that you made that determination in a public meeting, in case there's ever an issue about the classification, uh, of what, you know, potentially had a reconsidered personal property. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, seeing no questions there, um, I would call for a motion.
I'll take that motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
And with no further discussion, I would call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item three, Councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action. Approved the settlement, sale, and mutual release of all claims agreement by and between Nevada Northern Railway Foundation Incorporated and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation, formerly known as Whitekind Historical Railroad Foundation Incorporated and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation, the city of Ely, Nevada, a Nevada Municipal Corporation, and SNS shortline leasing LLC, a Utah limited liability company, and all exhibits thereto.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Chris Stanko again. So, um, obviously, it's a very long document because all the exhibits are incorporated into it. It's an over a hundred-and-sixty-page PDF. The first forty pages are the body of the agreement, the remaining are exhibits that are incorporated into the agreement. Um, and so I'm going to go through, in decent detail, what the deal is all about. Of course, after, if you have any questions coming specific provisions or ideas, uh, of course, please, uh, feel free to ask me. But in essence, it's a three, again, three-point-one million dollar sale of the Northern Line to SNS. No reps or warranties are made about the quality of the property by the city or the foundation. It's all considered real property. SNS is paying that three-point-one million to both parties, one-point-five-five million each. It's payout, one-point-one million down, and then the remaining two million, over a twenty-one-month term, will take a promissory note, and they'll pay it over twenty-one months. There's no prepayment penalty, so it's possible that SNS could pay that later. Uh, the promissory note is secured by a deed of trust, securing the property, but not securing as part of the negotiations milepost zero to about milepost seventeen. That's important because Schafter, which is a functioning railway crossing with the main line, uh, is at about milepost eighteen, eighteen and a half. So if we ever did have to foreclose on the property, we would take it all back, including the functioning crossing and a little buffer. Uh, the line above that is, is really of low quality, and seems to have never, will never be used for at least connecting to, uh, at, at Cobra. I, you know, and so that, that was, we obviously want to try to secure everything, but that was part of the negotiated, um, agreement. And when I say agreement, let me just pause it quickly to make clear. There is nothing binding on the city council on this document, and nothing is binding until all three parties agree. The foundation has voted six to zero on November fifth to support this agreement, and Mark Bassett has signed it. SNS has, uh, has agreed to this agreement, and Mike Williams, and all the other parties have signed it. So that's important to note, but there's no obligation whatsoever. There's no agreement to agree, this is your decision here tonight, uh, without any legal ramifications on these negotiations. We can talk about, you know, what potential future litigation would look like. But, uh, three-point-one million dollar sale, one-point-one million down, two million dollar promissory note, secured by a deed of trust, milepost seventeen, thereabouts, to one-twenty-seven point zero. We moved the dividing line from milepost one-twenty-seven-nine, north nine-tenths of a mile. That gives us more, uh, protection and use of the McGill Junction, especially if the foundation ever wants to start running trains into McGill. And the McGill Divo there gives a brilliant turnaround. That's part of the, the deal as well. It's, also, uh, there's a guar, personal guarantee on the two million dollars by Mr. Williams, who is the majority owner of SNS and his wife, Tammy. Uh, so they're personally guaranteeing the two mil, two million dollars. And then we, we walk you through, you know, we're not making any reps and warranties as far as the quality of the line or anything with respect to title. There's going to be an escrow period that we're hopeful lasts only about thirty days. There'll be STB documents that are filed, as agreed to tonight. And then, um, you know, there's, there's some good points in here as far as protection of the historical line. There's an article about restricted covenants, and that we're, we're not supposed to sort of interfere and impede what they're trying to do on the Northern Line. And then they're not trying to interfere with anything in the historical line. As some of you know, I've been very adamant in trying to protect the historical line as much as possible. We work with our STB council, um, Jeff Moreno and Jason Tutron, the law firm Thompson Heine in Washington, DC. They're both the city and the foundation's joint STB council, and I've asked them repeatedly, and they're very, very good, excellent. Um, and I think that the historical line is protected as much as possible with this deal, which I know it makes everyone feel better. There's good, down, there's good protection in terms of environmental indemnity that SNS is giving. SNS is required to have insurance on the line. Um, there's minimal amount of work that can be done, very detailed procedures within, and it's within the deed of trust in detail while the promissory note is outstanding. And there's also kind of in conjunction with this idea of setting the table to allow for the best chance of economic development. There are obligations of the city and the foundation for the next few years to work with SNS and write letters of support, uh, with grants and everything. There's a lot of legal fees in the back, and miscellaneous sections, and, and things like that, um, talking about the closing. We release all claims. I think we're doing a couple of things in this document. We're releasing all claims, we're ending the lawsuit, we're selling the line. The past agreement and all litigation and significant issues that have gone on about the Northern Line are, will be, will be done once we close. We can move forward, we're going to be able to then open up to SNS, of course, and then we'll be able to come back and provide finality. And then, you know, our thoughts as your attorneys, of course, your deal, we think this is a fair deal. We negotiated very hard, uh, on your and the foundation's behalf. They had very, you know, competent counsel, and we were trying to find mutually, you know, workable solutions. I think it's a fair deal for the city and the foundation, I think it's a fair deal for SNS. It gets three-point-one million dollars into the community, it stops legal fees, it stops Mr. Williams' legal fees, and then he has the ability to then actually invest money in the line. We think it sets the table, um, for providing the best chance of actually getting that money extraneous to the community to be able to develop the line. And by doing, and it sets the table because we create clear boundaries, clear responsibilities, clear duties. And so we recommend, uh, that you do the deal. We still, you know, we amended, I have my amended, our amended complaint of our law firm. It was filed on July fifteenth, adding several new claims and reframing the case and everything. It would, uh, we would have to go into litigation session for me to go into any more detail on that. But I believe that it's in all parties' best interest, including SNS, even though I'm not their attorney, to, to stop litigation, to stop outflow of money to attorneys. And, you know, you know, we have a special rate and special financial situation with the city and the foundation because of, not this mine, but other members in my law firm's connection with the community. But nonetheless, obviously, high stakes, complex business litigation, even despite of that, is expensive. Um, and this would stop those costs, this would get three-point-one million dollars in, all within, it's front-loaded, which is good. Um, you know, I can't guarantee that they would pay on the promissory note, but we have remedies if they don't, and it's a short timeframe. So, you know, the, the deal still has to close. It's not, just because we vote tonight doesn't mean the deal could still fall apart, but we're hoping for a relatively short escrow period. And we'll kind of talk about, um, sort of further acts during the escrow period. And we'll kind of talk about sort of further acts during the escrow period as far as signing documents and everything to get the transaction closed. And, you know, again, it's a one-hundred-and-sixty-six-page document, several exhibits, forty pages of main text. And if there's anyone that has any questions about, talk about any aspect of it, I'd like to answer.
Chris, I'd like to, how you mentioned the type of utility the city...
Yeah, that's a great point, and I'm, thank you for bringing that up. The city, the foundation is still in every interest to act.